We'll get started here Tuesday, September 30th. Our special meeting on the budget and it is 7:00 PM, so we can start. Can we have a rule call, please? Madam City Clerk.
John Harabedian, Mayor.
Yep.
John Capocha, Mayor Pro Tem.
Here.
Council members, Ray Chell-Arismendi.
Here.
Denise Delmar.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Yep.
How about an approval of the agenda? Looks okay to everyone?
Yes.
Second?
All's in favor? Aight. And we will go to public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions that have been unanswered. I'd like to see if I could address those at this time. I provided seven public records requests. I have not been provided with the questions that I've asked. The first public records request that I had given, City Hall, was on July 22nd. The second one was July 24th. It's over 60 days, and I'd still like the answer to all my questions that I ask as a taxpayer, as a citizen, as a resident, number one. Number two, I believe it was September 2013, I could be wrong on the date. The city council voted that the city would purchase water from the City of Arcadia. At the time when we, our wells were dry, Bruce Emmons stated that our water wells, our motors were sucking air. I'd like to know how it was possible for City Hall to override the city's council's request to buy the water from Arcadia and take delivery of the yellow MWD water. I think that's a fair question to ask. The city council, does the City Hall have the right to override the city council's vote? And if they do, I'd like to know how that's possible, and if it is, why do we have a city council? Number three, I ask the City Hall in the form of a public records request, I'd like verification on how the city spent the $3.5 million of the CAR money from 2012, I believe, when the CAR was terminated. I've asked for copies of the invoices, I've asked copies for the city checks, I'd like to see proof that the city spent the CRA's money. If they didn't send the CRA's money, I'd like to see proof that it was returned to the state of California. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if there's no, we'll wait for other public comment and then we can answer those questions.
Good evening, Mayor Harabedian and council members. I owe an apology to council members Delmar and Arizmendi. At the last council meeting, I expressed my concern. Over the reorganization plan that they presented, I was afraid that the initial increase in cost was ill-timed, and I had trouble understanding the plan. That was my shortcoming, not the fault of those who wrote it. It has since been pointed out to me that the efficiencies, staff structural changes, and the wage and benefit caps would result in much-needed long-term savings to the city. Because we face future deficits, I would think that even though these deficits may have been overstated, now would be a very good time to institute their plan, which is designed to control future costs. There are provisions that could be modified, such as pegging payroll to market rates, since market rates could go crazy, but that would not be hard to protect against. So I hope that this council will reconsider the reorganization plan, looking at the long-term benefits and not just the initial effect as I did. Again, I apologize to members Delmar and Arizmendi for not being able to see the positive long-term advantages of their plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? And we'll bring it back. Madam City Manager, to the three questions, we can answer number two, I think from, just as the Mayor Pro Tem, and I, we never authorized the city to purchase water from Arcadia. You know, we'd always authorize the purchase to go directly to MWD. So I can answer number two. Number one and three, in terms of Mr. Ritchie's public records requests, where do we stand?
Number one, the seven public records requests submitted in July, all of those have been responded to, and Mr. Ritchie did come in and pick up and pay for those copies. He has them, he paid for them, he took them with him. For item number three, Mr. Ritchie was sent a letter informing him that the documents would be available after October 6th, because it is a large, it's a lot of pages. And it will be ready on time, anytime after April 6th. And he was sent a letter informing him of such.
Okay. And Earl, to the extent that you didn't think that answers, your previous public records requests weren't answered, does it make sense to come in, maybe talk with our staff about that? I mean, there's only so much we can do here, but...
I believe that Elaine chose to answer what she chose, not the entire question that I asked.
Okay. Okay.
There was the other one about the CRA?
That was number three.
That was the third one, which is going to be...
October 6th.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Also, it's my understanding...
Earl, you can come to the podium again.
It was my understanding, when we all gathered at the city council in this room, that the city council took a vote, and they voted to buy the water from the City of Arcadia.
No, we never...
That was before you were elected or you were on the city council.
That would have been when we were on the council, and I think it was October 2013, I believe, when we authorized the city to purchase from MWD. I don't know the exact date, I'm looking at Director...
Could we take a look, or I'll take a look? I can go through the records and let's find out what the city voted on regarding the purchase of the water.
Absolutely. We definitely can.
And then if the city did, if the city council did vote on taking delivery of the water from Arcadia, I'd like to know how you guys got overrode.
Okay.
I think that's a fair question.
It is.
And I would just like to add that all of our minutes and agendas are, you're aware, are online going back five years.
We can verify that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. And we'll move on to the one item that's on the agenda tonight, and it looks like there's going to be a presentation.
We have actually a short, or I have a short presentation this evening. It's only eight slides, it'll take a few seconds for us to get everything started up. I don't want to press the wrong button, Bruce, it's this one. There we go. Nope, I don't want to power off. No, I don't want to power off.
You also need to clean your filter.
Yeah, I cleaned our filter. Make that go away.
I'd like to. Doesn't want to go away. I guess we're just not going to watch this tonight. Where's this?
I wish I cleaned the filter.
I'll get right on that. Let me get out the stepladder. It should just go away by itself here.
Should go away by itself, it's just advanced, see if this is advancing, no? You might need to reboot. Technology is wonderful, isn't it?
Are there copies of this in the back?
There's one, there's, might be a few, but probably not enough for the entire audience. And it would be good for the folks at home to be able to follow along with us. There we go. And then make that go away. Gave us another box. On that corner over there. You might need to do it from the computer, Bruce, to move it away. With the mouse.
Yeah, the mouse.
There we go. There we go. Okay. Just a quick, oh, that's going to keep popping up, Director Inman, if you could keep making that go away.
I'll sit over here.
He'll sit over there, make that keep going away. What has brought us to this evening is, in May and June, the council on your regular agendas discussed and provided direction, we were able to finalize our estimates for fiscal year 2013-14, which just ended on June 30th, 2014. As you're all aware, the audit is currently underway, and it's estimated to be completed on time, just after the beginning of the new calendar year. Then in July, the city council received a more detailed budget presentation regarding our current fiscal year budget, which is the 14-15 budget, which would cover the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. The council received information regarding personnel staffing, our contracts, consultants, and also reviewed staff's itemized list of what 10% budget reductions would look like. In the end, the council authorized the staff to open up the new fiscal year with the budget as presented at that meeting, with direction to bring it back to the council in a special meeting where this budget would be the only topic of the night, and that's what brings us here to tonight's meeting. As a refresher, the current fiscal year budget is balanced, in fact, it's projecting a surplus of a little over $200,000. Our concerns are the next two fiscal years, which begin fiscal year ending 2016 and fiscal year ending 2017, which is when our utility users' tax begins to sunset or decrease. We're projecting about a $231,000 at this point in fiscal year 2016 deficit, and a $730,000 deficit in fiscal year 2017. I want to point out that the cover staff report for this evening, the report dated September 23rd, on page three, accidentally picked up the previous projections from before, as you're aware, in May, we revised our revenue estimate. So disregard the chart on page three of the cover report. These are the correct numbers. These are the numbers that are shown in the July 22nd staff report. They match. There's a couple of things happening. First of all, we have these sort of competing factors occurring on the revenue, oops, on the revenue side. We have our property taxes, we're projecting them to increase by about $357,000 between fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 17, but that is sort of offset by the UUT, which is projected to decrease by $829,000. I'd like to remind everyone, each 2% is about $500,000, but because there are some increases in the utility tax because of rate increases, that's the difference you're seeing between why this isn't a million dollars, why it's an $828,000 decrease instead of the million-dollar increase, there's just an inflation factor in the UUT. Then we have the loss of a number of one-time revenues we received in fiscal year 2014, one-time general fund revenues that are not going to carry over into fiscal year 2016 and 2017. The three big items, $266,000 related to the dissolution of our redevelopment agency, there was $110,000 franchise payment from Athens for the contract extension for our refuse contract, and then there was a $45,000 increase in our zoning and development fees related to the planning department because of the Kensington project. And of course, we're not going to have another one of those. So we had to back those one-time revenue increases out of the budget. That is why, if you look, you'll see that our total general fund revenues are actually down from the current fiscal year for those, those are the big items. On the expenditure side, I want to remind the council, these numbers here are general fund expenses of $8,200,000 and $8,500,000. We have not prepared the new budget estimates for the next two fiscal years. We do a biannual budget, we have good numbers for expenditures for the current fiscal year. It's not until we prepare the next biannual budget that we will have really accurate numbers for the next two fiscal years. What we did was a straight-line CPI increase to come up with estimates, so we would have a starting point for discussions. I can tell you now that those estimates do not include, we're aware of some major cost increases coming up in fiscal year 2016 and 2017, one of them being our NPDES, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System costs, which we funded with general fund reserves for the current fiscal year. Next fiscal year, staff, when we put a budget together, we'll be showing those costs, $200,000 to $400,000 in the general fund. We also have the successor agency administrative costs, those are about $200,000. We currently receive reimbursement, you can kind of think of it as our old redevelopment agency money coming back to us to fund administrative overhead, to dissolve our old community redevelopment agency. Eventually, those costs, the $200,000 in revenue will go away, but we'll still have the costs. The costs that are being borne by that are pieces of the staff that is dissolving the agency, which is the city manager, the finance director, and development services staff. So there's some big-ticket items that we're expecting to occur in 2016 and 2017 that aren't reflected in these numbers yet, I want to emphasize that. Property taxes, I want to spend a few moments zeroing in on our property taxes. This shows, this is an update as of today. These are actuals, 2012 actual, 2013, 2014, this is what we estimated when we put the final budget together that you reviewed in May. 2014, this is where we're actually going to come in at for property taxes. These are unaudited numbers, they're preliminary numbers, I'll explain that in a bit more. Our auditor's currently working on completing the audit. So we were only off, it's $3,762 versus $3,766. We're pretty close, you don't get much closer than that in your revenue estimates. And then here's what's proposed in the document that's attached to your agenda. We're estimating our property taxes will increase to 3.99, 4.1 million, and 4.2 million as we go out into future fiscal years. I want to show you that, the property tax detail, this property tax number is actually composed of what you would think of as your property taxes, the bill you get in December and April, that we all pay. There's a property tax number, and then there's always adjustments for penalties and interest and prior-year adjustments. There's always some money the city, and for the City of Sierra Madre, this has always been historically a positive number. And then we have, you may be familiar if you bought a house recently, the property transfer tax, which is actually, this is an, these two numbers here are actual of $77,000. So you add these three numbers up, you get to the $3,766,000, which you see matches this number up above. That's where the final, so the property tax number is actually composed of a number of things. What I want us to concentrate on, going into the new fiscal year, property taxes are estimated at 3.7 million, which is a nice, healthy increase. We don't have any way of knowing what the penalties, interest, and prior-year adjustments are going to be, or what the transfer tax is going to be. We've assumed a 25% increase from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year, because we're all aware that there's a lot of property-changing hands out there, and that's assessed, I believe it's 55 cents per thousand dollars on the transaction. This number here is the current number, and I'll go on to two slides next that show where we get the 3.7 million, which is our basic property tax number. I contacted, we actually contract with its HDL company to monitor our property taxes and our sales taxes, and they are the experts in the field of property taxes and understanding how property taxes work. I requested a spreadsheet from them to explain how this calculation works. We get a lot of questions about, you know, Elaine, all of these houses that were previously on the rolls for $300,000 are now selling for $1 million. Who gets all that increase in revenue? This is the calculation, how it's actually done. I apologize, I actually split it on two pages to try to make it a little bigger. This is in billions, it's 1.6 billion, our current real property value. Then you have the, our consumer price index, you might have heard, you're all familiar, Prop 218 allows a 2% increase unless the CPI increase was less than 2%. You were all notified in May that the tax assessors has informed us that it's actually almost a half a percent, it's .45%. So we get a CPI increase on all the non-Prop 8. Prop 8 are the parcels where somebody purchased the property, and since then, values have dropped. So they're allowed to get a temporary decrease in the assessment to save some money on their property tax bill. So here's our CPI increase of only a half a percent. Here is where a transfer of ownership assessed value change. We're estimating $46 million increase in all the property that is going to change hands in Sierra Madre this new year. 46 million total. There are still, there's an estimate for, people can still appeal their property tax values. There's an estimate in here, this is based upon the appeals that are pending, and if they don't come out in our favor, it's a reduction, that's money that we don't receive. And then this number here is, you're also familiar from May, the county tax assessor has reversed a great deal, I'd estimate 75% of the Prop 8 reductions have been reversed. So these property taxes are no longer being reduced to a down-market rate, they're starting to come back up to market value. So those monies get returned to the city. We always explain, that's a temporary reduction. A lot of people didn't realize when they saw this Prop 8 reduction on their tax bill, that at some point in time, it was going to bounce up to what the assessed value should be. So if you add up these one, two, three, four, five numbers, our total estimated assessed value in the city is about 1.7 billion. Add in our base year values, this is from our old redevelopment agency, remember, it went away, so we get property taxes on that now. Then the estimate for the secured and unsecured property tax roll, that's basically fixtures and equipment that businesses have, to get our new total estimated assessed value of 1.728 billion dollars. And up here, again, this is where the question of where does all that money go when properties transfer? You can see we've estimated $46 million of those. To get down to our total of 1.728 is being our new total assessed value. Remember that number, 1.728 billion. The next part of the calculation here, I carried it to this page, so you wouldn't have to remember. Here's our new total assessed value of 1.782 billion. Properties are taxed at 1%, so you take 1% of the 17.28 billion, and you get 17,288,000. The city gets on average, you've heard this before, we don't get dollar-for-dollar of property taxes, we get on average about 22 cents on the dollar. So here's, our share of the 17 million is 3.75 million, that's the City of Sierra Madre's share. There are still some outstanding appeals that, about only 23,000, so it's small. There's an estimated outstanding appeals, which gets us to our new property tax estimate of $3,734,000. And if you go back to this sheet, you'll see the $3,734 has been dropped in here. You add in the penalties and interest estimate, the transfer tax estimate, our new revised estimate should be about $3,937,000. It's currently in our budget for $3,991,000. So we're, our current budget is a little bit optimistic. I can tell you that historically, Hindu, Leidar, Dalmas, they give very, they're conservative estimators. The last thing they want to do is give an estimate that is overly optimistic. The city uses it in their budget document, and they find themselves in a deficit position at the end of the year because revenues were estimated. My professional opinion, and I did consult with our acting, our interim finance director, I feel comfortable staying with the 3.91 million dollars, because we do perform better than the county-wide averages as far as property taxes go. Our housing holds its value, it appreciates more than LA County in general, so I do think we're going to beat the estimate. But I do want to point out, in case I'm wrong, it could be as low as 3.97 million as opposed to 3.3991. So there's a difference there of about $60,000. I include these numbers down at the bottom. These were HDL's estimates back in May. I show this because it is a bit of a moving target. It depends on the property tax payments we receive. HDL is constantly updating their records for properties that change hands to come up with that estimate of what the new assessed value is going to be for the properties that change hands. So depending on when you ask them to do this analysis, it'll go up or down. We're not that far off currently from May to September, but it's just an example, that it is a bit of a moving target. I always say, estimating revenues is really more of an art than a science. We try to do the best we can to base our estimates on facts, but you're predicting into the future, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. But all of this is meant to say, I think the estimates that are included in the budget document are optimistic, definitely don't understate our revenues, and maybe slightly overstating them. Here's the two spreadsheets. This is another thing we look at when we do our property tax assessments. You can see, this is a history from 2014 to 2014, which is our estimate, I call it a pre-audit number, you'll see the 3.766 number, that hasn't changed. For this entire period of time, from fiscal year 2004 to fiscal year 2014, which is the last year that we have pretty accurate data on, we've increased about $557,000, and, which is about a 17% increase over that period of time, which on an average basis is about a 2.4% average, if you were just to do a straight-line average each year for that period from 2004 to 2014. Then I'm showing, if you have an average of about 2.4% over this period of time for 2015 and 2016, the estimates have been bumped up because, you know, recognition, our housing prices are increasing. The increase over this period of time is $357,000, which is 9.4%, or about 4.7% average increase, percentage increase, which is double, just about double, what our historical average is. So this is just additional information to help the council become familiar with the methods we use to calculate what our property tax revenues are going to be. I know that was a lot of numbers and a lot of explaining, I can pause here for a second if there's anything you want me to go back and review.
The question I have is, so with the projected gap, with the $231,000 for fiscal year end 2016, and the $730,000 gap for 2017, does that include the projected increase in property taxes?
It includes these numbers, yes.
When you put together the estimate for 2014, why wasn't the transfer tax and penalties and interest included in that, or why was it embedded in the estimate instead of shown separately?
I just didn't break it out, Mayor Pro Tem. There should be numbers here, I just didn't break them out to, I wanted to get the going-forward information done. I didn't do the research to pull these, but it would look the same, there'd be a number in this line, and then an estimate for penalties and transfer tax. I just didn't pull it out. There should be numbers there, they're just not pulled out.
Right. Okay, so do you know what, remember what HDL had predicted for fiscal year 2014? I'm just curious as to whether it came in higher than what they projected, just same like for 2015?
2014 is a strange year, because as you recall, no one knew that the county tax assessors was going to restore the Prop 8 adjustments. That was about a $250,000 bump that no one was anticipating. So 2014 is a little odd. If I go back to the original estimate they gave us when we were starting the last fiscal year, it was probably about $300,000 less than what we finally came in at.
Because of that one time.
But 250,000 was that one-time bump from the Prop 8 adjustments.
So are all the pro- So are all the prop eight adjustments done?
No.
Or we could still be getting some of that?
We could still be getting some of it. The preliminary estimates, because the assessor's office doesn't share all of it, preliminarily, the experts are saying we've gotten 65, 70% of it already. There's another 30% yet to be restored.
Are the prop eight adjustments embedded into 2015 numbers? Because it would seem to me that the way property prices have gone up, that'll, at the end of 2015, that'll be the end of the prop eight adjustments.
They are estimates of restoring it. That was the sheet I was showing here. They estimate, going to 2015.
Okay.
They're estimating, we're going to get 46 million of it back.
I see. Okay. Good. So it is embedded in there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
One other question. On slide three, when you were talking about the known cost increases for fiscal year 2015 with NPDES and successor agency, did I hear you say about 200 to 400,000?
NPDES at this point is estimated in the 200 to 400,000 range. We're currently, we know, we haven't put the budget together yet. Rough estimate, minimum of two, maximum of four, 100. And then the successor agency is 195,000. That's the exact number today.
195?
Just remind me what that is?
Which one?
The NPDES.
That's all the stormwater discharge stuff that we need to do, the additional monitoring of our-
And that's going to come out of general fund and not out of water?
Correct.
Okay.
Just, just a point on that, because I was reminded that we throw these acronyms out there and the public doesn't know, but it stands for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So I'm going to try to be really careful to define the acronyms for the benefit of the audience.
Yes. And you can even simplify it. It's a stormwater, it's a stormwater runoff.
Yeah. Can I just follow up on that a little bit? Because we pulled it out of the sewer rates, that, that is taken into consideration, did you say, for the 200 to 400,000 estimate?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you know, the administrative costs, I mean, I understand what you're saying about that, but I, I don't see that as an increase in costs. You're, you're really not going to spend extra money for that. And if we, if, if for all of a sudden you were not doing any work anymore on it, you're not going to lay off 200,000 worth of FTE, full-time equivalent employees, you know, right?
That's correct.
So I wouldn't-
Well, it, but it is. It affects the general fund. Probably the simplest way I can explain is to give you an example. Let's say you have an employee, round number, 100,000 employee. Right now, 50,000 is going into the general fund. 50,000 is going, being paid by-
Okay.
The admin. Once the admin goes away, the whole 100,000 has to go into the general fund.
I see. I got it. Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
My understanding is the NPDES, these estimates of 200 to 400,000, could be very conservative. Is that true? Couldn't it be a lot more than that?
Not in 2016, 2017. As we get out into the future years, depending on what the various analysis and studies, if we're constructing some system that cleans up the stormwater, that could be in the millions of dollars.
But there is some uncertainty about that, isn't there?
There's some uncertainty about what the costs are when you get out more than, the next two years are finishing reports and starting to do some monitoring of the storm, of the outflows. After that, we may have to, once we do the studies, we may have to build, construct something to clean it up further.
There's one more point on that. I mean, the, the plan that Analyst Carlson is working on with the communities that we've partnered with has to be approved. So they've got a plan that they're working on, the consultants working on, but we don't know if the powers that be are going to approve that plan. They may come back and say, this is not helping enough. You need to build more.
And upgo the cost.
Yeah. So I'm, you know, I mean, that's a possibility. And that's the, the problem with a lot of people that have been studying this are saying that it's almost like we're being held hostage, so to speak. In other words, if you, if you spend enough money in capital, you get quote unquote "safe harbor" where you won't be sued by the environmentalists.
And there might be a push actually too, which would be nice for us to actually unwind and, and actually reduce some of the requirements of the water permit, which they're now looking at on the federal level. So, I mean, fingers crossed, we could get some relief there, but I wouldn't hold my breath. So, yeah.
So going back to this amount that's not included, was there a reason it wasn't included in our projections as we're looking at budget gaps and as we're looking at the upcoming years? Should we include that in?
Because we've not prepared the next biannual budget yet. There's going to be some line items that may go down. The council has done, been very aggressive in doing things like paying down our OPED, other post-employment retirement benefits, you know, to state what acronyms are. We've, we've paid off a big chunk of our JPA IA liability. So there's some areas. There'll be increases, there'll be decreases. Until we sit down to do the actual line item budget, I don't know, I couldn't tell you how, how close we are to these numbers.
Well, one more point. Can I make a point on that? And again, we, we just removed a chunk of that right before you were elected with the new water and sewer rates, or the sewer rates. The council unanimously felt that that was inappropriate to be funding some of that from the sewer rates. So we took that out and we threw it out into this nebulous general fund that it wasn't there projected before. So I think we did the right thing, you know? I mean, we probably, we could have gotten away with embedding that into the sewer rate, but none of us felt that was the right thing to do.
And it should be pointed out, Mayor Protem Capocha, that that resulted in the sewer rates not going, increasing by as much. Water rates were going up by a significant amount. For sewer rates to also have gone up by a significant amount, we would have had both. So by pulling that out, our sewer rate increase was very, was nominal.
Did I understand correctly, we have a consultant who's helping with all of this?
Yes.
And, and the consultant doesn't have any estimate of what the cost is going to be?
Cost for what?
To implement this?
The NPDES.
NPDES.
No, we don't have a consultant helping us with the cost yet, the total cost. We are, we are the members of a five, four, five-city consortium, Monrovia, Arcadia, quite a few cities. I can, the one number I know for sure right now, for the next stage of the plan, there's a 100,000 contribution we make to a, I don't remember the total amount, I'd be guessing a 7 million project that needs to happen next.
What is that project?
That is the, it'll be coming to you at the second meeting in October. I don't know the details of it, but it's to do the preliminary testing of the outflows at different areas. We need to test what is getting into the sewers. That's a very simplistic way to explain it.
And this is all for really water permits, right?
This is-
I mean, it's a simple, some-
Federal stormwater permits.
Okay.
And this consultant is developing the, what is it?
I just heard-
Right now, the consultant's developing our monitoring plan.
Okay.
Because first you have to test to see what's in the water.
So we do have a consultant, right?
We're a member of this five-city consortium.
Okay.
He's working for us in the other cities in the consortium.
Okay. So there is a consultant.
And then there's a cost share. Sierra, and good news is, it's population and city square miles base. So we get a small share. It sounds like a big number. We get a small share compared to the Arcadias and the other big cities participating. It's, it's proportioned out based on population and square miles. So right now, the consultant is working with all the cities to develop the joint monitoring project.
Okay. So my question was, does this consultant have any idea what the cost would be for the monitoring system and estimate?
That's coming to you in, yes.
So that's the one that's coming?
That's coming to you, the second meeting in October, and I don't have those numbers memorized. I remember our share being about 100,000, but I don't remember the, the details, how it was split up.
Okay.
And City Manager, you have one more slide that you want to finish?
Yes.
And then we can jump back into questions.
This is the last slide. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to get direction from the council regarding how to proceed regarding the reduction in the city's utility users tax. We, our current fiscal year budget is balanced. Council hasn't given staff direction on whether or not, it's a timing matter. Do we start reductions this fiscal year? Do we leave this fiscal year alone because it's balanced? And do our reductions in 16 and 17? Moving forward to 16 and 17, you know, there's, there's, there's basically two ways to balance a city budget. One of them is its expenditures or its revenues. On the expenditure side, service level reductions, which services to save money, alternative service provision, which services might the council be interested in, in seeing whether or not they could be contracted out, and if there'd be a cost saving by contracted, contracting a service out, which service. I always hate to mention the revenue side of things, but it is part of the equation. As you're aware, we don't currently do a full 100% cost recovery on our fees. Fee studies always establish the cap, the max, and council can set anything between zero and the max. Most of our fees are not at full cost recovery. And then, you know, evaluating possible new revenue sources. And then, lastly, is direction regarding the new biannual budget. It is staff's recommendation that we do start working on the details, that we start in October, hopefully to have a draft with you by, we'll work on it October, November, December, January. It's about a four-month process to be able to return the very beginning of the year, February, March, with a draft budget so you can see what the numbers would look like. But we would need, in order to put that document together, we need to have some direction on the items that are in the bullet above. Service level reductions, revenues, whatever other recommendations the council would like to give staff. That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. And there's a lot here. We've seen this staff report a couple of times now, and there's been some updates, but there's still a lot of information here. And open up to questions from the council, to the extent that you guys haven't asked, asked them already. But feel free to shoot on-
I actually have one.
Yes.
And I thought this might be helpful because I haven't been here a thousand years like you all have. And there's a lot of people that are new to our community. And in going through this, there's a big piece that I'm missing, and I think a lot of people. The UUT hasn't been around for a lot of years. So my question is, when did it, when did it come to be? And it had a sunset on it? And why was that sunset put on there? And why haven't we been working towards that sunset? So my first question is, when did it come to be? When did, why, and why did we decide that we needed a UUT? And if there was a sunset, in my mind, I keep thinking, if we knew that there was a sunset, that we shouldn't be using that extra percentage for salaries and for vital programs. So in my mind, I'm thinking that must have been used for just a one-time phase. So, and I can't find it anywhere in the budget, and I keep looking back. So I know I'm, I'm totally missing something. So maybe one of you guys can explain it to me, or someone else.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good.
The UU-
Did you want to know too, Michelle? See?
Okay. All right. Well, because, you know, I was here. I voted on it.
You've been here a thousand years, right?
Except, let me, let me go back to old history. The UUT-
Oh, the first one, yeah.
The UUT predates the 1990s. The city has had a utility users tax since before the 1990s. It was about 6%. I think it's been, it was 6% when it was first put in place.
In 1990s?
But it was, no, I don't know the exact year. I know pre-1990s.
John's been here since then.
No, I, I don't remember when the first UUT. I was going to start with the-
When the first UUT got, was implemented, I think it was at 2%. I think it was actually really, really low. And then in 1996, they bumped it up to, to 6%, 6%, right?
It's 6%.
Yeah, 6.
Predates me. But I know, I know it's old. We've had a utility users tax for many years.
And of course, the reason for it was because of Proposition 13, capping the, or limiting the amount of revenue. And, you know, that changed everything too, because before, you know, my understanding, before Proposition 13, the council would set the budget and you would be taxed to match that budget. That's how it was done. So, okay, so it's a, it's a more difficult world that we live in.
You're all prepared and everything.
I, I did a lot of work on this during the election. Also going back to the 2010 election when I was elected. Okay.
Go back to my question.
Okay. But it was put in basically for two reasons. And this one went in, in 2008.
Okay.
And it was put into, first of all, to, it was an alternative to another ballot measure that was proposed by the police depart, or the, the police-
POA.
The POA, the union, the association, which was going to tie salaries to the average in the San Gabriel Valley. And I don't really know all the details of that. So an agreement was reached with the council to put an alternative measure to give the police department, and I'll say it, and I believe in it, much-needed raises. So Measure UUT in 2008 gave our sworn police officers raises in consecutive years of 9%, 8%, and 7%. It also funded the paramedic program, which was just getting started. The seed money for the paramedic program came from selling the Canyon Firehouse. But it was understood at that time that that was not sufficient to sustain the program going forward. And today, we, we subsidize out of the general fund, the paramedic program by about, what, 500,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay. Now, again, I just want to point out that at that time, in 2008, I'm pointing out that we had followed a succession of property, good property tax years leading up to 2008. So in spite of the property tax growing at a pretty fast rate back then, because I looked at all these numbers, I can kick those out as needed. But at that time, the community felt that it was important to do this for the police. Otherwise, we were going to have to pay even a higher rate to tie it to averages in the San Gabriel Valley. So I do want to point out again, at that time, that was approved by 62% of the voters.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me just make a couple more points about it.
But in 2006, wasn't it?
No.
6%?
Oh, 2006, it was 6%.
I've been to 2008.
Right.
April of 2008, it went to-
Okay. So, okay. And then-
This measure-
Then it went to 10%.
Went to 8, then 10.
Okay.
Okay. Then it stopped at 10, and I'll get to that in a second. But I do want to point out too, that, you know, the, the, this was unanimously supported by the council. That was Ena Joffe, Joe Mosca, Buchanan, Don Watts, and Kurt Zimmerman, all supported this at the time. And so it passed by just about two-thirds of the voters. Okay. So as City Manager Aguilar just said, it, it, you know, it ramped up over the years. Then what happened is, this is just my opinion now, I'm going to speculate. These are facts, but I'll give you an opinion. What happened was, is that this was at the time of the telecom boom, when everybody couldn't consume cellphones fast enough. And the cellphone revenue, or the telecommunications revenue, and I can show you all this on graphs, but the telecommunications revenue shot up tremendously. So now the UUT brought in more money than was forecasted. So the council at the time, and I don't remember the exact, who was on it, they said, whoa, this is coming in pretty hot and heavy. We should keep it at 10% for now. So they did. They did the right thing. Instead of, you know, taking advantage of the windfall, they capped it. And I do want to point out again, because of the advisory measure UA, we've had a committee every year look at whether the utility tax went to the purposes for which it was advertised on the ballot, which is public safety. So every year, the Citizens Committee, working with the Finance Director and the Treasurer, has come back and verified that the increases in the money that we've spent on public safety have been less than the increment-
No, more.
Or been greater than the incremental tax revenue that we got from Measure U, Measure U. So I just want to point that out. So my point about this is because the council has been so conservative in their spending, that difference between what came in with this tax and what we've spent on the police department was money that could not be spent on trees, on streets, on the library, on parks and recreation. We, our, our council, working with the city manager, continued to chop down expenses in all those areas to give the extra money to public safety. So that's where we're at.
Okay. But you didn't answer my question.
Oh, the, the sunset clause. Okay.
Yeah, that's the big thing.
Yeah. You know, I-
Because the budget hasn't gone down to that 6%.
I can, I can, I can only speculate on the reason for that. You might have to talk to Mosca.
I was here.
Okay. So what was the thinking on the sunset clause?
In 2008, the thinking on the sunset clause was entirely for accountability. The council at the time wanted to make sure that the voters had an opportunity, that this wasn't locked in forever, that the voters had an opportunity to tell us, tell, tell their government again, yes, we see that the increase has gone to public safety. Yes, we'll continue that increase. So it was entirely done just for accountability, a check-in point with the voters again to-
So it was entirely done just for accountability, a check-in point with the voters again, to make sure that this was still something that the voters were in favor of. It was entirely for accountability.
I want to point, can I point out something? I just, on my own position on it, because when we started in the last council.
No, I don't think we need to do our own positions. I'm just really trying to get the facts.
No, I want to just point out a point. I, when we first were talking about putting the last ballot measure on the ballot, I was against the sunset clause, but I was talked back into it for the reason that City Manager just said, that I thought it was, if circumstances changed and property tax skyrocket, or our expenses decreased, because we're on a pretty good trend for some things that we've been paying heavily on, that, you know, it's, it's worth looking at instead of embedding high taxes from now till eternity. So, thank you for listening, by the way. I know you didn't want to hear that.
But, but my question still comes back to the budget never, never decreased towards that six percent, or the eight percent. So that's my big question. It never went down to that. So was there, in, in the thinking, and in the city council thinking, was there always that, we're always going to go back to the voters and see what the voters wanted? Do they want to keep the ten percent? Do they want to go to the eight percent? And then if the voters say no, we don't want to go to the ten percent, then we're going to say, okay, well, we need to take action then. So that, was that the thinking? Okay. So the voters have said now twice, no, we don't, but I still don't, I still can't see that decrease. So that's, that's where I'm.
We're doing the decrease now, essentially.
Okay.
We haven't had to decrease to this point, because we've had the ten percent through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So the decreases affect our next two fiscal year budgets.
Okay. So we were just kind of hoping that the voters would say yes the last two times.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, when we were running, I think in 2010, I don't know what that council was thinking. I know, you know, this, this time around, we thought we could convince the voters that, that the ten percent rate was, going forward, was a good investment for the community and that the services they got for it were worth it. And, you know, we lost.
Which could be.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, you're right. But we were pretty confident that we could convince the voters to extend the UT. And, you know, it was close. But I do think that the council before, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what was in their head when they were thinking about putting together the, that proposition, which, you know.
And I'll just tell you, my take on all this is, my take is, the city council has to be the fiscal responsibility. And fiscal responsibility means you're given a set of numbers and you need to work towards those numbers. And the set of numbers was, this is what we need to work towards. We could always go back to the public and say, hey, you know, this is what it looks like it's going to be, you know, at the end of 2017. Do you really want to see us there? But I never saw that. So that's where, you know, now we're here where we are. So for me, it's, it's more of an accountability to us right now. We are, you know, we are the fiscal responsibilities and so we need to do what we need to do. And I, I just wish it had started when it should have started.
You know, and it's a good point.
Should have, would have's.
Right. And, you know, it's a good transition to where we are today. And I remember back.
And thank you for the, the history, John. You did a fine job.
The last biannual budget, I know that we did talk about, you know, budgeting for ten percent, eight percent, and six percent. And, you know, we had a couple of meetings where we saw the numbers and we ended up going forward with the estimates that we did. But, but here we are today. And I think going forward, you know, I mean, this is where, this is why we're here tonight, right? To talk about that question that, you know, how do we get to six percent?
I can make one more comment. Again, I feel that the council, the last two years, we've worked hard to try to minimize the expense, as you're suggesting. But I wasn't willing to, to go to a scorched earth scenario where we start shutting down services or immediately moving to contracting.
What did you do? Just.
Well, I mean.
I mean, what is one of the, because I can, what is one of the, one is, I'm not being facetious at all, I really just want to know.
For example, I mean, just, we, we chopped some of the roundabout services and used that money for a street repair, for example.
And we're down, you know, we're down ten FTEs.
We're down ten FTEs. The biggest thing we did about three fiscal years ago was a reorg, a different reorg, where people were laid off and we saved about $250,000 of general fund.
We reduced city hall hours, which of course is not, but, you know.
The big, the big cut was the, the last reorg about three years ago, that saved about $200,000.
And then it was paying, paying the, you know, some of our debts and deferred liabilities off sooner so that we wouldn't.
Okay, so the reorg is, so that's the biggie, when we lost, how many?
We, we, no, the last reorg, we lost, the ten, the total of ten is over a couple of, it's in the charts.
Yeah.
The total of ten is over, let me go to the chart, five or six fiscal years. Let's see here. That is in your attachment to your.
The last reorg, what, it was six FTEs that you cut?
That sounds about right. The last reorg was about six FTEs.
And I think the big, you know, to the Mayor Protem's point.
From fiscal, fiscal year, fiscal year nine to fiscal year 15, we've only lost 2.47 FTEs.
Right, I think if, what page is that chart? I think if you look at, go a couple of years, it's from 2009 to 2000.
Yeah, but you did your fiscal year.
Fiscal year, no, fiscal year 12, 11, 12, we were at 102.
Yeah.
And by 13, 14, we're down to 88.
Right, and, and Community Services lost nine of those.
Yeah.
Right.
The pool and.
Library lost, Public Works lost, PD lost. It's, it's spread out all over.
Not really.
But we had, the, the peak was 102.
My point was though, from fiscal year eight, right, from when you put in the.
Which was 97.5.
Right, to.
Eighty-eight.
I have 95.07 down there.
95.07, that includes our elected and appointed. The numbers to compare is the 97.54 and the 88.07. Ninety-five is if you include the council.
And the 9.9 is our water works folks, right?
I don't know where you're seeing, I'm sorry, a 9.9?
That's our Community Services.
Community Services goes from a peak of, in 2008, nine of 13, almost 14, down to four and a half.
So I'm just, I mean, that's where the big chunk of, of your FTEs went, is there.
That's probably, yeah, that's where the biggest chunk went, when we contracted out the pool.
Okay.
Yeah, and, go ahead.
That same spring, they also, that same council raised fees quite considerably. Isn't that correct? Was that, was that the following year?
I don't know, yeah. It depends on how we define considerably. We did, we did increase fees.
Well, I wouldn't say they went way up, but they were raised.
They were, they went up. And we also, I mean, a couple of other things, you know, staff has gone without salary raises. I mean, we did.
Yeah, I know.
A bit of a cola, you know, as you guys saw. And then, you know, we haven't filled positions in various departments, most notably the PD, and those have been left unfilled. So, I mean, look, we've done, you know, we've done certain things. We haven't, you know, as the Mayor Protem said, we have not scorched the earth and we have not started, you know, aggressively cutting. You know, that's, that's for sure. But again, I mean, I think, you know, fast forward to today, I think this is a tough job for us to do now, right? And maybe past councils could have done a little bit more work on that. I mean, maybe we didn't do enough, I don't know. I mean, hindsight being 2020, but that leaves us all here at the dais with a very, a very hard task.
And I think that's my point. I think my point is that there hasn't been a lot done. And I know that we kind of say that, but looking through it, really, the expenditures have remained about the same. Actually, some have gone up. And so, yeah, we do have a hard job to do right now. And we're going to have to do it. And.
We do, yeah.
We're not going to be liked.
So, any, and then we'll get to discussion after we do questions and are there any other questions before I open it up for public comment?
Just one. The deficit for 2016, 2017 is, you said, probably understated. Is that correct? You said it was understated?
Probably understated.
Probably understated. And so the scope of this problem is much bigger than I think we realize. It's, there are a lot of imponderables here that we cannot really control at this point. And so I feel like, I mean, that just has to be said. I mean, we can't whittle around the edges and solve this budget problem. We're going to have to really hit some big issues.
Which is why the July 22 staff report, if you go back to that one, the recommended reductions were in the tune of 800 to a million.
Right.
Because this 730 is understated.
I'll open up for public comment now, and obviously we can ask questions after that. But public comment questions on, on the budget.
Earl Ritchie, 134 Esperanza. I'd like to ask a simple question. And I think we've asked this before. And, I mean, for somebody that sits in the audience, if you're people, you're resident, most of the time, we don't get any answers. But here's a simple question. If the city's truly trying to reduce expenditures, why hasn't the city fixed the water tunnels that we have that are in the mountain? If we fix the water tunnel in the mountain, we produce more water and we also drill additional tunnels, we have free-flowing water that we don't have to pay for the electric pump to move the water out of the ground. And, and it might get us around the situation that we have, where we have a common fieldwide reservoir that we share between Arcadia and the city of Sierra Madre. By Sierra Madre failing to produce the water, we have nowhere to store it. It allows Arcadia to completely drain our reservoir. And it's our three-dollar-a-unit water that Arcadia is selling to their residents for one dollar a unit. So my question is, why have we failed to fix the two tunnels that we have to try to have them to be commercial-producing water sources for the benefit of the city? And also to drill some additional tunnels? We've been told time and time again as residents, we're going to raise the water rates. I don't have a problem with that. And the city councils also said, we're going to fix the water infrastructure. So the water tunnels and the water wells are part of the water's infrastructure. And if Arcadia can pump water out of our common shared reservoir, we should be able to do it too.
Thank you. And we'll answer that after the rest of the public has a chance to comment and ask questions.
This is more of a question of probably show my ignorance, but in prior, in prior discussions, there've been quite a point made about, there's a general fund and there's other monies. And I don't know, because many say, oh, well, that's not general fund, so there's something else. And so I'm not quite clear what that means, because I get the picture, well, it's not this pocket, it's probably this pocket. Because they, okay, well, it's not general fund, so, but we'll pay someplace else. And so I don't know, maybe that's what my ignorance showing there. But when I hear that, say, oh, that's, that's not general funds, we have to worry about that. But the money's coming from someplace. And so it's, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but when I hear that, it's, okay, well, which pocket is it coming out from me? Because I'm paying for it. So I, as I say, that's one point that's unclear. When we're fixing this, are we downloading it to someplace else? Or are we really, you know, you know, moving it over? So, yeah, the general fund looks good, but there's other problems we've got to worry about over here. So that's a concern I have, is it, because it, it's, it may not be there, but, but when I hear you guys talking, it sounds like it's quite specific. General funds, oh, that's a problem. Otherwise, it's not a problem. So I may misunderstand, but that's a concern I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you answer that as well? It is, it's confusing. Any other questions or comments? So we'll bring it back to Mr. Ritchie's point. So the West Tunnel is, is operational and we get about 10% of our water historically from that a year. The East Tunnel, I mean, we've looked at for years now, since we've been on council, about investing the capital into that project to make it operational. And, you know, the big risk there is, we don't know if we were to spend $200,000 on getting the East Tunnel operational, whether it's actually going to produce water like the West Tunnel does. The facts before us and the data that we have, it's questionable. We don't know if it's going to flow like the West Tunnel. So the West Tunnel is operational, we get a lot of water from there still. The East Tunnel, it hasn't been operational for a couple decades now. And we would have to invest a substantial amount of money to make it work, and we don't know if that would actually be worth the investment.
It's in our program.
It's, now it's in our program. And, you know, we've set aside money to actually look at it, but I don't know how much money we set it, you know, maybe a little north of 100,000.
Not even.
Yeah.
Just for this, we need a study.
The study, right. So, I mean, I guess to your question about the tunnel, the two, East and West Tunnels, on drilling more tunnels, again, that's a capital cost. We've gone to our water district to ask if we could get help there on possibly drilling, you know, a new well somewhere. And I'll just say that we're in conversations with the water district right now about that. To Dee's point about the different funds, so it's a good point. Tonight, we're pretty much just talking about the general fund, because we're talking about general fund revenues and general fund expenses. The UT, which funds the general fund. Because of the sunset, our revenue source for the general fund is going down, give or take, $800,000 to $1 million. And that is different than what's going on in the water and the sewer fund, or any other, you know, the internal fund. And the reason why it is a bit confusing, and I agree it's confusing, is because the way I look at the, I think the way that the city council looks at the budget is the revenue and the expenses for each fund are independent, right? We don't, we don't mesh and we don't cross streams. We don't fund general fund expenses with the water fund or the sewer fund, or vice versa. Some cities do. I mean, you look at other cities and, Glendale, for example, they do a lot of transfers out of their water fund and sewer fund into their general fund and vice versa. And that's been a bone of contention in that city for a number of years, and they're dealing with that now. And Madam City Manager probably knows that full well, is the Assistant City Manager. We don't do that, because we just don't think that's the right thing to do. I don't, I don't know if there's any governmental accounting standard that says you can't do that. But we do what our auditors say, and our auditors say it's best not to do that. So it is a bit confusing when you say, oh, well, this isn't impacting the general fund. Well, the way I look at that is, there are certain expenses that just don't impact the general fund, because it's paid by our water fund or our sewer fund. So it's not really, you're paying, you know, it's not like robbing Peter to pay Paul, because they are actually just completely separate enterprises. We have a water enterprise, we have a sewer enterprise, and then we have a general fund that, you know, funds our police and community services and library. I don't know if I explained it that well, but I mean.
Can I explain one thing, too? With regard to additional tunnels, there used to be a tunnel in Bailey Canyon. It didn't really produce much, so it's closed up and sealed and you won't ever be able to find it. Also, I know that there was a, I looked at all these engineering studies that were done over the years, there was one proposal to suggest that maybe in Lannan Canyon, up there by the Santa Anita Shantry Flat Road, that possibly we could put one there. But when you look at the watershed for that, it's, it's just, it's not something that's going to produce a lot of water. Our tunnels just don't produce that much. It's not going to be something that is substantial. And also, when those tunnels were put in, was before the turn of the last century, try to get something done with that with SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. I mean, you can't hardly build a house without satisfying SEQA, much less tunnels. And I don't think the environmentalists would be too happy if we were putting more tunnels back there anyway. So that's just my opinion about it. I don't know if Director Inman wanted to, would like to comment on that, because of course, this has been thought of over the years and looked at.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, if Director Inman would like to come up and comment on the tunnels, he can. And if you want to, to Mr., to Mr. Alcorn's point too, if you want to, you know, you can comment on that too, if you'd like, so.
Oh.
If you'd like, you don't have to.
All right. In regards to the tunnels, I'm currently working on an RFP for a consultant to come in and look at both tunnels, to see what it would cost to upgrade both, to get the East Tunnel back to drinking water standards, if it actually even can be done. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that these tunnels do not flow water consistently. They're very much subject to seasonal flow. The West Tunnel, which has always produced the most water, has at, I checked with water staff, the most it's ever flowed was 500 gallons a minute. That's not a whole lot of water. Right now, it's flowing at a whopping five gallons a minute. So even if we could, or even if we were in a position right now to start work on those tunnels, right now, because of the drought conditions, it's not going to be a dependable source of water. And, and as the mayor noted, even in the best of times, it only provides 10% of, of the city's water. We had one year after those heavy rains in 2005, '06, where we got 60 inches of rain, the tunnels flowed an enormous amount of water, but we weren't able to capture it all. It was flowing out through the vent holes in the doors of the tunnels. We weren't able to capture it, but that was one time in the 17 years I've been here. Most of the time, it's 500 gallons a minute or less. So it's not a source of water that is going to keep Sierra Madre afloat.
Thank you, Bruce.
Since we're on the subject, Mr. Ritchie's point about drilling in our East Raymond Basin, we've dealt with this in other, and I don't want to go too far with this, on a budget discussion, but could you address that?
We did do a, a well sighting study a few years ago, I believe it was about 2005. And we were not able to locate a, a good well site within Sierra Madre, within the East Raymond Basin. The best we could do was to find, was to find a site that was actually at the Duty Man House, which is very close to our existing well field. And the consultants at that time, the geologists, said, you know what, it's probably not going to do you much good to drill a new well there, because ground, bedrock is going to be at the same shallow depth there as with our other wells, and drilling so close to your existing wells, you're just going to, when you turn the new well on, you're just going to drop the levels in your other wells. So there's no point in doing that. We would have to find a location somewhere very removed from our existing well field. Perhaps somewhere in Arcadia, and what we've been talking about with our water district is actually drilling a well in Arcadia in the San Gabriel Main Basin as a source for getting water from our district.
One other question that Mr. Ritchie asked that we haven't answered is, why is Arcadia still able to take water and we're not? But they cannot take more than their adjudicated rights. And our intention here in Sierra Madre is to take 100% of our adjudicated rights also. So our wells are turned off for now, but they're going to be turned back on at a point. Then we're going to take all the water available to us, and we'll probably turn them off again unless it rains heavily. It, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, you're correct in that. We have left our wells off until this, the new water treatment has taken effect, and we can actually, and when we've got the Dr. Baraboe's studies are completely done to show what we do to treat both our well water and the metropolitan water, because we're going to need to use both at the same time and have a treatment for both. Then we'll turn our wells back on, we'll pump our 940 acre feet, then we'll shut our wells off. That's, that's what we'll be doing.
Just that simple.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bruce. And coming back to the budget, just so we can focus now, I guess, our questions and comments going forward, the way I view it is, there's a couple of big questions that we as a council have to decide. You know, timing, do we want, to Councilmember Delmar's point, do we want as a council to start aggressively cutting now? I mean, there, there's a couple of different options that we can do. We can, we can live through the, this budget cycle, as we've adopted, where we have a bit of a surplus, and we know that to 2015, we're fine. And, you know, we don't run into a deficit. We can do that, or we can start making the, the reductions now that we know we're going to have to make in 2016, 2017. So that's a big thing, like timing now, later. And then, depending, I know where I stand on that, but depending on what we want to do, then I do think there's options. Look, there's, there's, there's the option to kind of nibble around the cookie, as we, we like to say, or make a series of cuts that we've outlined in here, you know, whether it's cutting off a few consultants here, trying to reduce FTEs in certain spots, to get to a certain manageable point, and then maybe talk about more revenue. Or if we don't want to talk about more revenue, then it's really talking about, how do we get $800,000 to $1 million out of this budget? And I, I agree with, you know, Councilmember Goss. I don't know how you do that with, with just, you know, systematic cuts throughout the, throughout the various departments. I think you'll probably have to be talking about outsourcing a department, or maybe even two. So you know, I don't, I'm not necessarily set on any of those options. I just think that those are some of the options that we have in front of us. Happy to hear other thoughts or ideas that everyone has, so that we can, I don't think we're going to come to an answer tonight, but maybe at least move the ball forward on narrowing, narrowing some of those things, so. And I can go first. I mean, I, in terms of the timing, I don't think that it makes sense now to start trying before the end of this fiscal year. I don't think it makes sense to start making drastic cuts now. I, I don't think that we, we've adopted a budget to get us through the end of the fiscal year. And to me, I think we can live within that budget, and then talk about the next biennial budget to get to that $800,000 number, if that's where we want to go, or whatever the number is. Does anyone disagree with that? I mean, does anyone have reservations about living through this next budget, knowing that the next biennial budget is somewhat of a cliff?
I'll just say this, I'm not, I, at first, I expressed my opinion on that, that we should start working towards that, but half the fiscal year is, you know, I mean, we're quickly approaching half, and it's less and less practical to do that. So, you know, perhaps we should have started immediately, as soon as the council was elected, and working towards cuts for that to be effective. We've got a 200-plus thousand surplus. What I just don't want to see is that we use that surplus to balance the next year's budget.
Budgets, I agree.
So I'm, I'm okay. I'm, I'm going to be pretty flexible here, because obviously, I don't have the answers, you know.
I don't either.
You know, to your point, Mayor, there, there are just so many factors to consider, and, and I think, you know, as I was preparing for this, I, I outlined all the different things we need to think about, and I think one thing is the timing. And so the approach is to three-year budget, whether we make the cuts now, whether we make it with year three in mind, with the $800,000, $1 million budget gap, if, if expenses remain, well, I should say, if revenue remains relatively the same. And then, do we make the cuts now? Do we make it year two, make it year three? So timing, obviously, is, is something you have to consider. The second thing is what our priorities are now, considering with the water moratorium, building moratorium, with the general plan that we keep saying we need to make sure that we expedite through. So there, there is work that needs to be done these upcoming two years, and this is also why, going back to the last council meeting and the reorganizational structure that was pushing so hard for that, because with these budget cuts in mind, we still have work at, at the table that we need to get done, and we can only push off so much. So yes, I will bring up the reorganization at some point, I'm sure, tonight, but-
And I don't think that, you know, I think that the reorg, the plan, and I said this last time, I think that that should always be part of this thinking, thinking about that plan, and what, how we are going to reorganize potentially, and, and the benefits and the sides. I think it's fine to talk about during this.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to. So, um, so what, think about the strategies, you know, carrying over the surplus, is that something that we want to do? Do we look at reducing line items? We're going to have to, whether it's, I know we had some proposals, or I should say, some things to consider from the staff, when you're looking at contractual line items, looking at other variable costs, and some of the big-ticket variable costs, and I, I kind of listed those out, and I don't need to go through it at this second. But the big, big-ticket item is, is personnel costs. I mean, there's no question about that. And it was interesting, because I, I was trying to find out in the report if personnel costs were called out for the percentage of total budget for general fund, and if my calculations are correct, I, I think they are. It's about 74% of the total budget. It's huge. And I, I do have a question, as I'm, I'm kind of just sharing my, my thoughts on this. Am I correct, City Manager, that the special revenue fund is totally separate from the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, again, if my calculations are correct, it's about 74%. So we have to consider personnel costs, whether it is FTEs, that's part of it, contracting out, or eliminating some departments, too. And I know that's not something that we want to consider, but it's something we have to think about, and do some cost-benefit analysis, and just see what costs look like. The question is the timing, and when we're going to do all that. And I think, you know, big-picture things, those are the strategies I was, I was listing out, but I'd love to hear from other folks, too, if you have priorities. But again, I don't want us to discount the fact that we have the general plan and the building moratorium and water moratorium issues that we have to deal with within the next year, two years.
I have a couple things. I think that our, our budget that we have now is fine. I wouldn't want to go making any cuts to it this year. I think we have enough on our plates for this year. The one thing I, I would like us to keep in mind is our community, and, and listen to them, hear what they have to say, and try to get, try to get us to that 8% with the community in mind. But I do, I'm glad that Councilwoman Ayers-Mindy brought up our workload, because we do, are on a deadline, and we do need to set our priorities. So I kind of think that might be our first thing we need to do, is set our priorities for the next two years. And that might guide us to where we need to be as far as our cutting. I also would like to look at our current contract services, and see, we might be able to, I was looking at our development services. I know you did this before, you did an analysis, but I'd, I'd really like to see, you know, how many hours we have our building inspectors out, you know, is it possible that now that we have more remodeling, we might be able to utilize one of, you know, have an FTE instead of our contract services, and have them in the development services, doing the permits, that kind of thing, and really look at our contract services people. So I think, I think we just need to kind of make a list. I think our first thing is what our priorities are, kind of go through those. What are, I think we're going to have to cut some FTEs, either contract services out, listen to our, our people. Maybe hold some community meetings. I do think, though, our first priority is getting to an 8%. Using a UUT at an 8%, and let's see what we can do with that. If we can do it without being too painful.
A lot of, a lot of very wise things said here. I can't really say I disagree with anyone here. I think that we will have to look at big-ticket items, as we might want to, really, you could, you could approach this many different ways. Nine or 10 people out of our FTE load probably makes the nut. Anyway, you want to, are we supposed to micromanage that and pick the people, pick the positions? No, that's the city manager's job, but that could be something we could direct her to do. We could, we could cut programs or end programs, or we could contract out programs. Messing around with contract services as we, as we are sitting now, I've looked at those, most of those things, we can't really do without. A lot of those contract services are kind of just baked into making the city run from day to day. You know, I, the three of us up here just ran for office this year, and I guess I got a, I got a strong message, and it was kind of a mixed message, because I was getting from people a, a very strong sense of satisfaction with city services. I don't know how many times I had people tell me how much they thought our police department was fantastic. I mean, there were some people who complained about it, of course, but overall, a lot of people are very pleased with our level of police services. I sat on the library board last year, and we did a, we did a very substantial plan for the library, strategic plan, and part of that was a very, very high respondent-rich survey, and what I got from that survey was not only do the people love the library, they wanted to do a lot more. And this is the same people that told us by about 85 votes that they want to see the revenue to pay for all these things cut. So I'm having a hard time squaring that, those two things. I also saw, you know, I went door to door to door, as, as Councilmembers Delmar and Ayers-Mindy did. We all heard this, we, we kind of compared notes during the campaign. We all heard this about Public Works, that the water issue was very important to them, and that they wanted a better quality of water, and they want, they were concerned about the price of water. And so what I get from all that is, we, we need to find efficiencies. We have to find efficiencies. We've, we have to encourage innovative cost-cutting strategies in every department. We really need to impress our managers with that. And how you do that is a managerial question. It's not something I think we should rightfully be telling our management to do, but I, I want to say right now, I think the managers ought to be coming to us, telling us what they're doing in terms of cost, cost-cutting strategies. And there are a lot of things that can be done out there. But I think we also need to just take a deep breath and go, you know, this is, government is about not just the fiscal stuff, right? It's not just, it's not just balancing budgets. Government is about making a community work. So I'm not exactly sure, I'm new to this, but I'm not exactly sure I want to take us down the scorched-earth path, because I don't know if you get that back. I don't know if the community will be the same if you, if you take a, if you take a library out of commission, if you contract out your police department, bring in the sheriff's department, and all of a sudden, you have all kinds of customer service problems. I don't know if you follow the news, but I've been following the news in the last year, and the sheriff's department's got some pretty significant PR problems. Could Arcadia be any better? Would Pasadena be any better? In any case, if we turn it over to them, you're not going to be coming up here during open public comment to tell us about problems with your police. You're going to be going down to the County Board of Supervisors or the City Council of Arcadia. Do you really want that? I sure don't. And I, I've met very few people campaigning in this city this year that want that. So I really, I really, now going to this point of when we start, I, I don't see any reason, I don't see any advantage to cutting this fiscal year. I don't see how that would advantage us, but I do need, I think we need to light a fire under all our managers. We've got to find ways to cut costs. I think the taxpayers are owed that. We need to show them upfront that we're very serious about this. And I don't know how that, how that would be. But we also need to talk about revenue, too. I don't know what that would be. Would that be fees? I'm not sure, but and ultimately, I told people when I campaigned, and I saw, I said, I presented out in my literature, and I'm a man of my word. I said, I would not be open to the idea of contracting out police services. And I stay, I, I will, I will, I will stick with that commitment at this point in time. But I do believe that maybe we ought to go ahead and get bids nonetheless, just to see what it would cost, see how much we would save, and let the public see that. If the, if the public really looks at that, and they see an advantage, let the public come in and tell us that. But they'd need the numbers first. And I'd need to be persuaded by the public, because right now, I'm not persuaded of that. So I don't know what the next step would be, but I, I think we have a good group, good group here. I feel like we're all, our hearts are all in the right place, and I think we're going to get it done.
Can I just piggyback on that for a minute?
Please.
I think what Councilman Goss is saying is sort of on point, and going out and talking door to door, I actually heard people who did have a lot of complaints about the city, and maybe we went to different doors, but-
I'd heard those, too.
And a lot of people were saying it wasn't so much that they just felt overwhelmed. They felt overwhelmed by constantly being asked for more taxes and the water increases, and not seeing anything for that money. And I think, you know, closing City Hall, I hate to harp on that, but that, that was a big, that's a big thing for the, the citizens of the Sierra Madre, they're, we're closing City Hall, and it really didn't save any money, and we cut down on customer service. And those, those little issues doesn't seem like a lot, but for the community, it really is. And we need to build the community trust again, and we need to build those efficiencies again. And once again, that was part of the reorganization, and, and cutting down our health benefits. We haven't even touched that surface. If we, we can reduce a lot of money that way. So there are a lot of things that we can do before we start contracting out, out services, before we start doing our FTEs. But again, I'd just like to reiterate, we really need to do our priorities, get our priorities, what we need to do for the rest of this year, and get ourselves down to that 8% UT, and, and then go from there. I think if we try to do everything at once, it's going to be too overwhelming for us, and we just need to piece it a little bit at a time.
Can I come, respond? I, I agree, Councilmember Delmar, I do, I did get a few of those complaints. Every now and then, I would hear about concerns from people about possible, the tick, police officers issuing too many tickets. And I certainly heard a lot about the water quality. We all did. But by and large, what I heard from people, and when I'd ask them, you know, give me your take on the city, what would you like to see done better? What are the highs and lows? Anybody who'd give me any time gave me very positive responses. I mean, I'm not making this up. I, I spent months doing this. And, and obviously, when you get negative responses, those make a big impression on you. But I came away with this, that the, the problems we have are workable, but that we have a lot of, a reservoir of goodwill out there for most of our citizens. And I think we need to, to build on that, while taking into account the very valid concerns of the people who voted down our utility tax. The same people, basically, the same people. So I say it's, I have a, you know, attacking this, we have to, we have a legal fiduciary responsibility to balance this budget, and we're going to do that, come heck or high water. I just hope that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
I'd just like to say that one of, I believe one of our highest priorities is-
I'd just like to say that one of, I believe one of our highest priorities is to come up with a plan to get the budget balanced throughout fiscal years 2016, 2017, and going forward. To me, that is one of the highest priorities that we have to do. I, I, I just disagree that we should look at just getting to, losing the first two percent. I think we need to address the whole picture and do it all at one time, come up with a plan to get us where we need to go. That should be one of our highest priorities. I do have a question for Councilmember Goss, because you've done this, pardon me?
I'm in trouble now.
Well, no, but you, you have done this twice in two years' time, as far as knocking on doors and reaching out to the public. Did, did anything really change fundamentally between 2010, 2012?
Not at all, not one bit. You know, it depends on how you approach people. I, I've got two people who won office here, too, and they can, they had success, too. And a lot of people you talk to, they come out and they say, "It's nice that you're running for office. You seem like a nice guy. I don't have a whole lot to say." But most people don't complain. Most people don't say, "Well, you know, the police are terrible," or "I'm spending too much taxes." Most people are basically content. And I, and I, maybe that sounds like a cop-out, but you know what? If most people are content, then they're content. I mean, I, I don't want to create the impression that the people who are very upset should be taken lightly, because there are people who are very upset, people who've had bad run-ins with our police, people who've had brown water for a year, people who have income issues and where the utility tax is, is, is more than a marginal concern in their fin, in their household budget. We have to take them seriously.
Yeah.
So to me, there's, we have to find a balance here, because we, we represent everyone, not just the people who are, who are the most vocal about their complaints.
So I, I would just like to suggest, maybe just as far as a, a path forward, I do think we need to look at the scorched earth, okay? Just assume that we're going to keep our major departments. We're going to have a library, we're going to have a police department, we're going to continue with the way the fire department operates today. So, get us to, Madam City Manager, get us to that, you know? Figure out a way to cut. And I, I'll just say this again, in my mind, I know that this is, you need direction, but I just want to say this, I've heard this, I, I don't know that anybody disagree, but if you do, please say so, but I think public safety is first and foremost in this town. I think this is what the city needs to provide for its citizens first and foremost, to ensure that our town remains safe. This is why a lot of us came to this town, and I, I still believe, I can speak for myself, and I still believe that's true with people moving in. Next thing that in order of importance, I think, is Public Works. We need to keep our streets and our sidewalks reasonably well-maintained. I mean, this goes back to the broken windows theory that Chief Bratton was successful with in New York City. Our, our town, our property values will degrade if we don't take care of our infrastructure. Okay, beyond that, I don't want to prioritize, but, you know, community services is, is very important. When I look at the Mount Wilson Trail Race, the Fourth of July Parade, some of the recreation programs we do, this is minimal. I don't think we do a lot, but it's important. I'd hate to see that go away completely. Obviously, the library is important to many, many people. I can't tell you, I have no opinion as to what percentage, whether that's 30, 50, 60 percent. I do know that there are people that suggest we get rid of the library. I don't know if that is a minority or a minority, but, or majority, but that's out there. But, you know, we can live without recreation, and we can live without library. But I don't think we can live, this town is just not going to be Sierra Madre, as we know, if, if we don't keep it safe, and if we let our infrastructure go to hell in a handbasket. So, I would just say, you know, you, you may need more direction from that. I'd like to hear what other people think, but that, that is one thing, is to look at just how to cut to get us to that. I do believe we ought to go out for bids to contract services. We ought to look at police and fire, and we ought to look at library, and I, I don't know if it's possible to do the community services, if that's even possible to contract, but community services is only, what, $200, something thousand dollars out of the general fund budget? That in itself isn't going to get us, but combined with library, combined with something else, maybe that'll work. But I think we owe it to our citizens is to have the options on the table. I personally believe that our town wishes to keep its own police department, but I don't think that the residents are really clear on what the, the cost-benefit of that. If we could look a little bit more closely at what it might cost for the sheriff to come in, and possibly Arcadia would be willing to give us a bid this time, then we can evaluate that, and more closely than what was done last time, because I don't believe that there was any citizen involvement with the, the last time, in 2010, when he went out to get bids for various agencies to look at the police. But we need to evaluate those so that our citizens can see the cost versus benefit. If there are savings, what are we losing? It may be that we can improve service and cut. I don't know. I don't believe that, but we need to find out. We need to find out whether it's possible to contract our library services, or even look at the possibility of just getting rid of the library altogether. And I know there are going to be a lot of people up in arms about what I just said, but I'm just saying that we need to look across the board and get feedback from our citizens as to which of the options are most viable. A scorched earth one, as I just mentioned, and different combinations of contracting out. And I think the timing is, we need to do it right away, because it's going to take at least a year and a half to get to the point where we can actually do it. So we're going to be eating into our reserves here if we don't figure out how to get one of these three options done. So that'd be my suggestion.
Go ahead, please.
I think you picked up my notes, Mayor Protem. And I, I, these are notes that I would like, I, I would like to share my notes with the rest of the council and for those and, and to make this public. But yes, I agree that the two main priorities that I listed was public safety and, and city infrastructure also, and, and services to residents. I do agree that we need to seriously take a look at contracting out, just so we understand what the costs are, so we have that to evaluate and to assess. And then I also have other specifics. I really think we need to, well, I don't really think, I know we need to look at our organizational structure. Again, 74%, if I'm calculating correctly, of our general fund is coming from personnel. We need to look at efficiencies, we need to look at flow. Anytime I've looked at budget cuts, it's where I had to start, is looking at your personnel costs, especially considering it, it's the big line share. So with that being said, I do have specifics that I'd like to, to share, and I, I don't need to list them all out, but I'll just kind of go through it. The staff, we did direct the staff to take a look at what their cuts would look like with the variables, and the 10%, I, I really don't like the idea of a certain percentage across the board, because every service is different, and you can't just assume that an across-the-board cut is, is, because it works out in numbers, is going to make sense for services and what we're considering our priorities. But I know there was initial $168,000 that we can look at, cutting from the general fund line items, and that was what the staff had proposed. But I also have a lot of questions with contractual and professional, and I have a list here. I am not suggesting that we cut, eliminate it altogether, but I would like to know what these services are, so we can determine what they are for. And I'll just kind of list them really quickly, and, and I can give this to Madam City Manager, so we can get some, at least I can get some responses, what these are for. Police, it looks like we have 8-800 with the City of Pasadena for contract. We have $24,000 Humane Society. We have $55,000 that the police is contracting out. I didn't see what that was for. But again, I'm highlighting these big-ticket items. $69,000 for Verdugo with the fire department. UCLA has $23,000, Public Works. We're looking at $71,000 for landscaping. So again, I have a list of items that I'd like to see what those costs are for, whether one, they can be eliminated, or two, at least be reduced. And then the other big-ticket variables I saw, and again, I'll just give a list, a handle of a list to you, as Madam City Manager, but just so that the city council understands what I was looking at. Library, books and references, $61,000. Vehicle maintenance, I know for fire, it's $101,000 I know we need to maintain, but again, what can we look at to reduce there? Vehicle maintenance for police, general fund, $120,000. ISF, fleet, automotive equipment, $212,000. So I just pulled out the big-ticket items. Again, I know some costs are going to, we need some of those costs, even though they're variable, but to take a look and see what we can do there. And just other notes, I think we kind of hit all of those, but the contracting out, again, as much as we don't, may not want to consider that as the end decision, we just need to have real data and facts to be able to compare, to determine what the cost-benefits are for our city.
Can I ask a question of Councilmember Goss?
And then I think, yeah, absolutely, and then Councilmember Delmar has a question.
So all, all the big-ticket items that you listed right here, what's the total on that? Did you add that up?
No, I didn't. And, and the reason why is because I was going to try and see if we took it all out together, but I, I knew we couldn't do that, so I didn't total it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to just suggest this...
It's an Excel spreadsheet, so I can just total it out.
You know, having, having been through this a whole whopping two years more than you have, you know, we've looked at these things various times, and we've all asked questions about them, and, you know, I, I don't remember, I remember the reason we do some of these, not all of them, but my take is that there's probably some opportunity, maybe, where we could cut some of that, but I would just make an assumption to say, there's a percentage, perhaps, that can be cut, and how close does that get us to where we need to be? And that's my conclusion after going through an exercise like that. It's the nibbling around the edges again.
Sure. And, and I, I agree, that's why I was going back to the personnel costs, is because...
Yes.
We, we cannot get around that. That's going to be where we are going to be able to minimize that gap of whether it's $800,000 or $1 million at the end of fiscal year 2017. Yes, this is just nibbling, but at the same respect, we still need to look at it.
But on the personnel costs, I'm absolutely with you on personnel costs. The conclusion I come to on personnel costs is that we, to get to those personnel costs, we have to stop doing a lot of things that we do today. I, I mean, again, we've all sat and, you know, done what you've done, gawked, pored over the numbers, sat with department heads, sat with people, and looked at ways to do this, and I'm, I'm a little tapped out on that. I can't really find anything substantial. I'm sure I could find things that I could look at, and I just think that some of that should be done offline, perhaps, with you and the city manager. See what you think, based on your expertise, what you're bringing to the table. I hope you've got some good ideas and ways to do it. I, I'm just, I think we need to think a lot bigger and deeper right now. I don't think that's going to get us there, so...
It's not, but no, no question.
Right, so the question is, what are we going to stop doing? Are we going to stop our recreation programs? Are we going to stop the parade? How much are we going to cut out of the library? I, I didn't mean to imply that I thought that police and fire and Public Works was off the table, but I just, as a matter of prioritizing, to say that I don't want to see public safety jeopardized, but yeah, if it's, if we're going to do this and keep our police department and other departments, there needs to be some, but I agree with you, not the 10 or 20% across the board. We have to figure out where, and that's why I prioritized in that way. I thought more had to come out of the back end than the front end.
For some numbers, the July 22nd staff report actually did exactly what Councilmember Eris Mendi has done. We came up with, and these are the numbers that are in the July 22nd report, of the professional services in the general fund, 57% or about $703,000 are mandated by law or policy. The remaining $445,000 are things that are discretionary, but that includes things like, you mentioned the $71,000 for landscaping. We can eliminate that, but that means our parks will never be mowed by...
That's what I was looking at, not necessarily eliminating, but...
But eliminating the things that we're not required by law to do, like mow our parks. The total amount of that savings is about $455,000. But the staff report goes on to say, do we really want to stop mowing our parks? The animal control, do we really want to not have a, a dog catcher in town picking up dead animals? So those things, we don't have to have them, they amount to 445, but what would the town be like without a dog catcher?
Let me just respond really quickly. I, I definitely took into account what the report was, what, what you provided in the report, what the staff provided in the report, but I even broke it down on top of that. So by no means am I saying one thing needs to be eliminated, but there might be areas of the variables that can be decreased. It is going to be small amounts, but if we are looking at where else can we tighten our belt, we need to be looking at every line item.
I agree.
Sorry, Councilwoman, did, Delmar, did you have a...
Yeah, I do. And I agree with everything, but at, at the same time, you have to, and I agree with what you're saying, Councilwoman Capocchia, but at the same time, you also have to kind of think out of the box, and go into, just because you contract services out, doesn't mean it's going to be cheaper, because you, yeah, exactly. So you have to do a little bit of everything. So we need to find out what those costs are going to be. We need to look at a reorganization. We need to look at our efficiencies. We need to make sure we have staff in the right positions. You know, we need to make sure that everything is where it needs to be. We need to start doing that right now. So to say, you know, what, what are we going to stop? What are we going to end? We don't really know right now. We need to look at the numbers. So I, I don't want the community to get all excited, thinking we're just going to stop things all of a sudden. We're really just gathering the information, seeing what we have, and seeing where we're going to be, and, you know, without that extra utility tax, and you, you never know. I, you know, being in this line of work, I can tell you, sometimes it's more expensive when you contract services out, because you're still paying people to do the work, and you're also paying an agency to do that, and sometimes you're paying more for that, that hourly. So I hope we don't all get our hopes up that we can contract these services out, and it's going to be cheaper, because it, it may not, so, yeah.
I understand, but we, you know, again, I'm going based on what I saw...
But we also have to look at expenses, even if it's a little bit at a time.
Sure.
And I respect the fact that you all have gone through this before, but fresh eyes may be able to see something else.
Yeah, I hope that's the case.
And also, I would like to even look at the reorganization, look at our health and benefits, look at our retirement benefits. All of that needs to be put on the table. So when I talk about our priorities, it's not what we're going to cut. I talk about our priorities and our workload, what the city manager needs to do, as well as the budget. And the budget is a priority, absolutely, it is a priority, but there are some other priorities, too, in the city.
Okay. The city manager, did you have, you were about to finish a point, I think, and then...
I was going to say, I still need some direction, because I don't quite understand what you want.
Yeah, no, no, I think, and to be fair...
You just need to do everything.
Yeah, exactly.
I need to do everything.
To be fair, I...
We can, we can bring back, every time we contracted out something, we can bring back the staff reports. We always did a cost-benefit analysis when we decided to contract parks maintenance instead of doing it in-house. We have those staff reports, so it's very easy. When we contracted out building and safety instead of doing it in-house, that saved money. So we can bring back the staff reports, that's relatively quick and easy to do. But when it comes to really making, I, I, you know, we, we've said it before, those aren't going to amount to $800,000. It really is going to come down to staffing, and without any direction from the council, I think, I, I, you know, there was a, there was a chart I used to always use in staff pres, in, in budget presentation, staffing equals services. You can't just say we're going to get rid of a staff. Really, we're talking about getting rid of services, and we're at the point now where, I mean, I can go back and make stuff up that might end up getting people upset, you know? You know, cut the library hours in half. You know, that's a minimum level we could provide to still kind of have some library services. Sorry to pick on the library, but, you know, I can just do those things.
That dog's getting kicked tonight, yeah.
But then I'm going to be, I'm going to be criticized for, you know, why them, and why a half, why not, you know, three, three-fourths of it reduction? It saves more money? It gets, it, it's, I can do this, but I'm just concerned that what's going to come back is, is still not going to be what you want to see, and it's, and, and Councilwoman Capocchia has hit the nail on the head. We really don't have a lot of time. You know, we're, we're literally months away from the first 6%. So we don't have a lot of time to solve this, and the longer it takes us, we will be dipping into reserves, which I know none of us want to do, till we figure out how to, how to, how to resolve this. It really, they really, and I know it's difficult, and there are huge, huge decisions, but that's the point where we're at now. We have already, through the last four budgets that I've been here for, have done the managerial efficiencies. We've reduced staff, we've contracted what we could. We're down to the point where I have to say, there really, if I was to go back to staff, there are, the only managerial efficiencies are going to be more contracting out. There isn't any way to do anything more efficient. We're already down to the minimum staff we can have for the services we provide today. So it is a reduction in services, and I, it would help if I knew if, if our, you know, which services are on the, the table for, for us to... for, for us to.
Yeah.
Come back with something.
So I'll try to, I guess, summarize, because I think every council member had really good points. And some of them, I think, are independent of each other. Because I do think that there isn't total agreement up here. As I don't think there should be after one meeting on this as to, you know, the right path or, you know, do we, do we shut off some certain options that we have now and go one way? Or do we just keep everything on the table? I think what I'm hearing is, we're gonna keep a lot of this on the table right now. And we're gonna probably give you, which you won't love, some pretty broad, broad direction, right? And we might, we might have some specific things that we give you right now. But what I'm hearing is, you know, let, let's take a step back. A couple council members brought up the point that maybe we don't go all the way to 800,000 or a million. Maybe we only cut to 500,000 right now. Maybe, you know, because, look, maybe revenue comes in higher. Maybe property taxes are higher than we think. Maybe certain things happen with, you know, other revenue. Maybe utility rates go up, you know, to such an extent that, as we project already, that, you know, the loss of 4% RUT isn't as much of a deficit as we think. So I think that we have to leave on the table the option of not going full monte on this. You know, that we only go to 500. And I think that changes, I think that option in and of itself changes a lot of the outlook on, you know, whether we're completely contracting out and outsourcing a department. And I think, yeah, whether that's feasible. I think within that option, for example, I think the, you know, the idea of maybe looking at cutting here, you know, cutting certain contract services or reducing certain FTEs in certain places, that becomes a lot more reasonable and a lot more feasible in my mind. So I think one of the options on the table has to still be, we don't go all the way to 800. We don't go all the way to a million. Because I, I think that that has to be something that we at least look at right now. Now, if we do go to 800 or a million, I do think that, I don't think there's any disagreement up here that people wanna see the numbers on, on outsourcing. And I think public safety is one of them that we're gonna have to see the numbers on, you know, whether it makes sense. I think the library is one thing that we have to see the numbers on, whether it's just shutting it down or whether it's outsourcing it. And whether you can actually outsource the, the remaining recreation and community services that we provide. I think we will all like to see those numbers be brought back, right?
Okay.
You know, so I think those are a couple of things that you can, that's specific direction on that. But I do think that there are some remaining things that we're gonna have to talk about in future meetings, which is, in terms of priorities, I don't think anyone will disagree with our priorities up here. I do think public safety, you know, infrastructure, all of that are our priorities. But in order to get to that 800, I'm talking about the 800 to a million option now, when we're gonna go full, you know, we're gonna try to get to that number. You know, I still think that there's probably some debate there, what you can do. I think that, you know, I'm of the mindset that you probably have to look at outsourcing a full department or shutting down a full department. I don't know if that's necessarily where we stand as a council right now. So I don't want us to, you know, I, I'm hearing a couple of people say, and I'm, I'm in that camp, I think, where, let's go and see what the.
See the numbers first and the cost benefit analysis and pros and cons.
And then from there, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I understand that.
That's right.
Has to be brought before us, and we need community feedback on it.
I understand.
So, and I think from your standpoint, from staff, it's tough because you're not gonna get the magic bullet, you know, the silver bullet tonight. And I don't think there's a magic answer.
This is enough. I, I understand.
Is this enough? Okay.
This is better.
But, you know, I think there were some, there were some very good things brought up tonight. I do think that there's a viable, there's a viable discussion to have about, you know, do we get to $500,000 and is that sufficient in two years? I don't know. I mean, I, I hope so. I would hope that in fi, in two years, the budget deficit is actually only 550 and not 750.
Mayor, I'm really concerned about this NP.
DES.
Yes.
And why there's such a big disparity between 200,000 and 400,000. To me, that's a really.
Just because we haven't done a budget yet, Councilmember Delmar. I, we haven't put a budget together yet.
That, that to me is really.
Until we sit down and do the line item budget, I can't tell you what that's gonna come out with.
I, I really need to see that before anything else, too.
So for the next budget discussion, what, what have we, you know, the consensus is we have a lot of things coming back. And I think it's all these options. The one is the timing. You know, we didn't really answer that question for you specifically, but I think from what I'm hearing up here, no one, everyone's keeping the current.
You've been correct fiscal year long.
And then, you know, but Councilmember Arizmendi brought up a good point. Do you do everything in year two? Or do you stagger it, year two and year three? To me, I think staggering it's probably, you know, this might be a little bit more specificity than you need now, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to go 800,000 or a million dollars in cuts in 2016 just to get us to 2017. Right? I mean, I just, to me, I would stagger it. But we don't necessarily have to agree on that tonight, unless that helps you. I mean, do, do you need that? I don't think you need that.
No.
Bit of particularity. Okay.
I think we should have a goal for a balanced budget in 2016.
We should have a goal of a balanced budget in 2016, because that's a lot easier.
But if I can say this, if we have a path to get us to 2017, then I'd be willing to maybe carry over some if we have a path to get to where ultimately we need to go. So to me, that's why I keep saying that I think the end game is what needs to be focused on more so than the short-term problem of next year.
That's always the focus, but you always have to, you can't, you can't have a plan to go to the end. You always have to have your little objectives alongside.
Well, you need direction. And we need to get the pieces in place today that is gonna provide that direction. That's why I keep harping on this. I think we're running out of time here. We, there's no way to balance this budget by chopping each.
Well, you guys should've started two years.
You know, look.
We could've, we should've, we could've started six months ago when, when the new, when the new council members got.
Let me, if I could recommend a proposal going to, to sort of next steps.
Yep.
We'll, we'll break it down in pieces. I can tell you that getting the contracts, getting estimates on public safety, police, fire, library, community services, that's a four to six-month process. I've done that here before. It takes that long to, to get the information for the proposed contractors to give us the estimate. So that's four to six months out. The things that we can, we've already scheduled, I, I pestered you for additional meetings. We have another meeting, special meeting scheduled for November.
November.
We can use that meeting. We have enough time to bring back the details on the contract services. So we can go through those in detail to figure out if there is some cost savings, how much we could get from looking at those in detail and see what we might be able to get some cost savings there.
And to maybe even take care of 2016, right? I mean.
Right. For, for, I'm talking for 2000, not for the current fiscal year. There'll be reductions we make for the new fiscal year. And we can bring back a tighter estimate on the MPDES stuff in the, in the November meeting also.
And in order to make a, a really good decision, we'll need to know our total health and welfare benefits and our PERS, right?
I wouldn't propose bringing those back just yet. That's sort of part of the reorg. And I'm not proposing to bring that back now.
We just need to know how much we pay in it.
The grand total? We can give you the grand total.
Yeah, I would, I would wanna know that.
Okay.
Can I ask you if the estimates for contracting services out, whether you're looking departments, does that include also coordinating efforts with local cities? Or is it just like, let's take police, for instance. Is it just a sheriff?
No.
Estimate? Or is it options of looking at?
For police, we would contact, what we did the last time was we sent letters to all of our neighboring cities that have police departments and the sheriff's department.
Got it. Okay.
So that, that could include conceivably Arcadia, Monrovia, Pasadena, the sheriffs. I think those are, they need to be contiguous to us at least.
Do we ever work with that independent contracting cities association at all?
We.
Get information from them?
Mm-hmm.
And then there's, you know, there's one option that we never, look, we have healthy reserves in the city. And there's, there's always the option, and other cities do this, where they will balance. And I think that we're all on the same page that we don't wanna do this. But just so, this isn't an option that we bring back. Is anyone prepared up here to potentially go to, let's say, $400,000 in cost cutting? And then use reserves to, to get us to, you know, the next spot?
Whatever reserves at right now.
Slightly more than 5 million.
5 million, yeah.
And, and I wouldn't, I mean, I would be very cautious about saying that we even think about that. I know it's something we can think about and we should. But at the same time, we should plan as if it is gonna be the $800,000 shortage or the $1 million shortage, shortage. But I just wanted to add on to is, as much as I hear agreement here about keeping this fiscal year the same, again, bringing back the reorganization, I don't think we should be doing business the same as usual. We really need to start thinking forward, looking at these efficiencies, looking at the flow. Because the longer we take with that, the harder it is gonna be for us to make decisions as to how to cut. And it's gonna affect services no matter what. But it's gonna be even worse if we don't start implementing some changes at this point. So I, that's great if we're gonna keep the budget the same for this current fiscal year. But I don't think we should keep putting off whatever reorganization that we are looking at because it, it ultimately will be to the downfall of our services to our community.
I'll just, I'll just say, I'm okay with that. There were just some things that I didn't think was right that was in there. And we, you know, we, we accepted a couple of things. There are other things in it that I like. If we can just work on it and get to where we got something that we can all agree on, then I'm fine with that. I mean, a question of timing, and I'll leave that to you guys to figure out, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm fine too, talking about that within the, the budget discussion, you know, so.
It, it, because I think it does blend well together.
Well, I don't. I, I don't think it did. I think it was increasing salaries at a time when we're talking about cutting budgets. I got a lot of feedback from people who were upset about that. And so I don't think that it's so simple. Look, if you guys wanna, if you're interested in cutting health benefits, if that's what, what's really concerns you, that is, that's so baked right into that plan, okay, let's put it out on the table. Let's talk about it. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. But if we're gonna do a reorg, let's do a reorg to cut costs, not increase costs. I know a long-term, five years is gonna cut costs. Well, we're not worried about five years now. We're gonna worry about the next two years, the next three years. So I mean, I read, if we're gonna bring that back, let's, at least can we agree? Can we at least agree, if I could finish, at least we could agree that we're trying to cut costs in the short term? That's good. I'm, if, if we're willing to do that, I'm good with it.
If we can bring it back, maybe we can explain that part a little better. Because I think, I think if we explain that a little better, you would understand it more.
I, I understand it perfectly well. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll, I'll just say this about it. I mean, we did not have a projection of cost in the package. That was not there. So that would be helpful to put that in.
Yeah, I mean, look, I'm happy to keep discussing, you know, I, I don't think that you can get around what we're discussing here and not talking about potential, potential changes in the way we deliver services. And, you know, I think that the plan that was, that was presented is a platform to continue that conversation. I mean, that's, that's all I'll say. And I don't think Councilmember Goss would say anything differently there. I mean, I, I think that there's a lot, there was a lot that we can work with there. And, you know, going through this budget, just looking at 2016, maybe that helps us get there. You know, maybe it does. I, we can continue that conversation. But is there a, is there anything else that we've left unresolved? Because I don't think we're gonna solve all this tonight, obviously. And we've taken out two hours, not that long, but we're gonna have to do this a few times. Is there anything that we've left unresolved in anybody's mind?
Not that it's unresolved, but for something like the budget, are we willing to consider a subcommittee? Because I would be happy to serve on that if that is something that's helpful. And or, you know, again, I don't know.
Even after your last experience on a subcommittee, you would, you would be willing to do that.
I would not wanna be on this subcommittee, but I would recommend this lady because she's really good with the numbers.
So I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea in theory. I just, every subcommittee that I've been on, and you guys were just on one, I think that, I think it's hard for the subcommittee members, for various reasons. One, when you bring the, when you bring the plan to the rest of the council, you know, I think that there are levels of, of knowledge and kind of buy-in on certain things. And then when the other council members don't, you know, necessarily agree with you, I do think it leads to maybe more division within the council than necessary. You know, and I found that on subcommittees that I've served on. You know, we had a, a marketing subcommittee, we had a business recruitment subcommittee. It seemed like every time the subcommittee would come with their, I think every time they would come with a recommendation, it was voted down. I, I'm almost positive.
I wanna concur with that because even our water subcommittee, we could not sell three council members on the things that Josh and I felt were very important.
And that, and I've just seen historically, every subcommittee's been shot down by the majority. And, you know, so I don't wanna waste anyone's time, I guess, is my.
I, I mean, I can appreciate that, but I guess, and then another way to look at it too is, if there is a subcommittee forum, that we can look at multiple options to consider and not just, this is, this is the one way. But I, I feel really strongly about it because, and, and I can also just give notes over.
I can see, nothing, nothing would prevent any council, a lot of this is just number crunching that staff needs to do. Nothing would prevent me from meeting with any council member at any level of detail they desire. You know, putting all the information out there with each of you individually.
And there's nothing that prevents you from crunching your numbers and giving us copies.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Or just, you know.
She's really good at that.
Well, and I do think, though, that it might even be more efficient for your time, you know, to just, we just shared up here. Because I think we're gonna have a ton of these conversations. And I think this is gonna be a 15-month process, right? I mean, hopefully we'll get the answer before then. But I think we have a little bit of time as a group to do it. I, I would not wanna see you and whoever else is on the subcommittee go out and just burden yourself with it and then come back and get burned, you know? I just don't, I just don't think that the, this, this project, which is the budget, is an easy task for a subcommittee to do. So. But, look, if we come back next meeting, we think, hey, there's pieces that we can subcommittee out? I mean, I'm not necessar, no, I'm not necessarily against it. I just, you know, having lived through a few subcommittees now, I just don't know if it's that, if it's gonna be the best thing for us, so.
Well, I.
I think subcommittee for informational.
Yeah. I mean, you could do, you, you could, right? I mean, you could do a subcommittee just on the contracting out piece, or you could do, you know.
You know, to go visit another town or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, one-off projects.
You bet.
Mayor Potamya.
I would just say is, I'm, I'm not big on it either, but I, I do have time. And I'd be willing to work with Councilmember Arizmendi and the staff. But I, I wanna be very sensitive about staff time. So I wanna ask that question. Is, is, do you think it would be helpful? I, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, I mean, seriously, I mean, we, we're all friends.
I understand. At this, at this point in time, it would be more efficient for staff to start returning with these preliminary things. The contracts, the total cost for health and, and PERS. And the third thing, MPDS costs. It's gonna be more efficient for us just to do the staff return with it. I think as we get into further details where we are, we need to do outreach regarding the contracting out proposals. Subcommittees may make, may make sense at that point.
Yeah.
I think what, what you're expecting to come back in a month, it'd be quicker for us just to, to crank the numbers and present to the council.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't be, I, believe me, I wouldn't be in a position to make recommendations. I think this is such a big deal that I wouldn't wanna be, as a subcommittee, making recommendations to the council on the budget. This is just something that has to be completely.
When it comes to making recommendations, but it should be something that's, you're equally knowledgeable about.
Yeah.
And the discussion happens, obviously, here in the public as it should.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have a couple, just off the wall, questions. The franchise fees, can you, someone just explain that to me? What are franchise fees? Do you all know what those are? Am I just the only one who doesn't?
Generally, but, you know, the expert, the city manager will have more expertise than I will.
We collect franchise fees from the various utilities in Athens. Basically, franchise fees are in exchange for a company having an exclusive contract to do something in town.
Okay.
Whether it's provide electricity or natural gas or telephone services or trash services.
Okay, and then they charge us?
Franchise fees are generally passed on to the co, to the customers.
Okay, so that's that one. And then for the, the Kingsington property, is that gonna be a big tax bill for us income-wise?
It will. There will be an increase. I was gonna say, it's about 40,000 was the number I remember. We do have a staff report on that.
Okay.
I'll have to pull it to get you the exact number.
I can find it. You don't have to look it up.
But we've, have we included that in the projections?
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
We have included that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know, yeah.
And I think, oh, when do we anticipate getting our audit for the 14?
That was in the presentation this evening. I believe I said January, February.
Okay, not till then. Okay, that's all I have.
Question for you.
Well, I do wanna comment on the subcommittee.
Please.
You guys wanna put the time and an effort in, I'm all for that. If that's the will of the council, I'm with you on that. I think that would be helpful, but if it gets in the way of staff, work with them.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with keeping on the.
The time and, and interest, it would probably save staff some time, I think, in the long.
Here's, here's what, here's what we'll do. She'll bring, Madam City Manager will bring back the next, the next round in a month. And then I think we'll leave this idea on the table. If we think, I think from there, if it makes sense, we can do it. I, full caveat emptor to the subcommittee members, though, you know, I mean, historically.
If we'll parse it out?
Yeah, maybe parsing it out, but it's just, it's just a lot of, lot of time and work for you guys, and I don't want to waste your time.
And just to sort of sleep on, it will be, you know, the next phase of this, when we are looking at service level reductions, you know, as a council member, you know, you need to, I mean, that's a tough one. You know, you'll be recommending to your councils. It's no more, you know, get rid of our special programs. It's, you know, reducing hours of life. That's, that's going to be tough, and as a council member, you just, you really want to be a part of that.
Yeah, I mean...
You probably do, you probably do, but just be prepared for the same pushback staff would get, you'll be getting it, why did you recommend that instead of that?
I want to make a comment on that. I mean, I don't have a problem making those kinds of preliminary suggestions, knowing full well that it would be impossible for five people to agree on what two people come up with. So, I don't have a problem doing that, because I know that you're going to have, bring your perspective to the table, and there'll have to be adjustments. But somebody's got to put something on the table to start with.
Yeah, and maybe you do have multiple subcommittees on this, too, so.
Well, I, I agree. So, I mean, the bottom line is, is, I mean, we have to do something. I'm willing to do it. This is the job I signed up for. I knew this readily, walking into this back in April. So, I'm ready to step up to the plate. With that being said, I think what we are going to be looking at are multiple options. I don't think there's going to be one perfect solution out there. So, to be able to bring as many options to the council, I think, is beneficial to all of us and to this entire city, is to be able to say, these are the different things we can do. These is how we can combine these different options. And you're right, what time is, our time is valuable right now, and we are coming down to the wire. Look how fast six months just came. So, two years will be here before we know it.
And not to scare anyone, but really, we need a new fiscal year budget in just eight months. We start a new fiscal year, so really, we only have eight months for the next fiscal year budget to get it done and adopted.
That's what we're trying to do, yeah. So, any parting comments or thoughts? I'll open it back up for the public if I know...
I have something.
Yeah, please.
I just want to say, I think this went well for...
There's a lot there.
You know, for a really tough discussion. Thank you all. I think it went well.
I agree. We'll open it up. I think last, last meeting, folks, I think, wanted another bite at the apple of public comments. So, I'll open it up if anyone wants to ask any questions or make any comments.
Hi, Pat Alcorn. A few years ago, there was talk about maybe contracting out the pyramids, so I wonder if that would be also an option on the table.
Yeah, I assume that was part of the...
Yes, it did.
Yeah.